Mr. Feinstein, may we have the road call, please?
Yes, Commissioner Kennedy.
President.
Commissioner Paul.
Present.
Commissioner Greavy.
Present.
Commissioner Werblin.
Here.
Commissioner Cruzen is absent. Vice Chairperson Evans.
Present.
And Chairperson Matthews.
Here. Commissioner Werblin, would you mind leading us in a pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. A brief word about making public comments. Persons wishing to address the Planning Commission on subjects not on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of the Planning Commission may do so provided that no action may be taken on off-agenda items except as authorized by law. Off-agendized items from the public will be taken under consideration without discussion by the Commission and may be referred to staff. Comments will be accepted in person or via Zoom. Instructions on making comments. To speak on an agenda item in person, please complete a speaker card such as this and give it to the secretary before the meeting or at the latest prior to the time for public comments on that item. When joining via Zoom, please use the Raise Your Hand feature or press star nine on your phone to request to speak. You will be called on by name and have three minutes to speak. Next, we have approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda?
No, not tonight.
Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I motion to approve the agenda.
And a second?
I do second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. Public comment. This is a time for public to speak on items not on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of the Planning Commission. I now open the public comment period. I do not see anyone...
I put my card if there's certain...
This is not on the agenda. Items not on the agenda. Nora, do you want to speak on items not on the agenda?
Yes.
Okay. Nora Dejean, please come forward.
Good evening. I'm here on public comments because I need to head off to a different meeting. But this is important for you to consider as you think about the general plan. We have a huge assault on Solano County when it comes to future water allocations. So I hope you keep that in mind that perhaps the future may be where we're under constant water conservation measures. Please, I was very concerned when I saw during the discussion on mixed-use zoning that there was even an idea that 100% housing would still be considered in mixed use. You know, the city of Fairfield has already acknowledged that it needs sales tax revenue to remain in good financial condition. We've been seeing this for years. And I guess we're coming across in your mind as just spoiled people. No, we are the consumers that need the services, that need the retail. And if done properly, instead of sending us away to other cities, we'd be shopping here and attracting other residents from other cities, other communities to come to Fairfield. And that's what your city needs. That is really what the city needs. And it's very clear during the budget workshop that the city wants to find a way to expand sales tax revenue. Please keep that in mind. We really do need that. It could have been done if we had considered offering incentives to the developer at Rockville Springs. But at that time, the city was a no. Well, you know what? Different administration. You gave it to the BMW company, thank God. We need to have that same type of mentality and grow sales tax revenue in the city of Fairfield. Thank you.
Thank you. You timed that very well. We appreciate your comments, Nora. Are there other persons wishing to speak on items not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll go to Zoom. I see one person online, no hands up. If there's no one online that wishes to speak, I will now close the public comment period. Next is the agenda topic. Next on the agenda topic will be scheduled matters. For each agendized item, there will be a presentation by city staff. I will then open the comment period via Zoom and in-house, with in-house persons. After all comments have been given and all of our questions regarding the testimony have been answered, I will close the comment period. After the comment period is closed, the Commission will deliberate on the item and may have additional questions for staff. We cannot take additional testimony or questions from the public after the comment period is closed. Our first item is Item Eight, a review and discussion of draft policy for the Fairfield 2050 General Plan Update. Our presenter is Jessie Hernandez. Please go forward, Ms. Hernandez.
Hello. Good evening, Planning Commission and folks joining us tonight. My name is Jessie Hernandez and I am an Associate Planner for the Planning Division and the Project Manager of the General Plan Update. This evening, I will be discussing draft policies of the General Plan Update. Tonight, I'll go over the purpose of the meeting. Provide a high-level overview of the General Plan Update. I'll review draft policies and stakeholder feedback. I'll go over next steps and then I'll support you all in having a discussion. The purpose of tonight's meeting is to review draft policies and stakeholder feedback through the lens of physical development. We are going to solicit your input. Our questions include, do the draft policies sufficiently address community issues and needs? And are there any gaps within the scope of what the General Plan Update addresses? We would also like to keep in mind that the City Council has provided direction and staff request that your recommendations aim to achieve that direction. The General Plan plans for future growth and development over a 25-year period. It launched in December 2020 and we have conducted over three years of ongoing public engagement. We began in the spring of 2021 by researching existing conditions and engaging the public to establish a community vision. We then evaluated land use alternatives or options for achieving the community's vision. We are currently developing draft policies. And shortly, we will begin developing the Draft General Plan, Climate Action Plan, and Environmental Impact Report. These draft documents will be released to the public for public comment in the summer of 2024. We'll also conduct additional engagement at that time. And then in the fall of 2024, we'll begin holding public hearings and hopefully adopting the General Plan Update. As I've mentioned, we've had ongoing public engagement for over three years now. We've conducted two online surveys, six public workshops, over 30 discussions with key stakeholders such as community-based organizations, business groups, et cetera. We've held eight General Plan Advisory Committee meetings. Our ninth is scheduled tomorrow. We've held nine study sessions with the Planning Commission or City Council. We've held two joint study sessions with both the Planning Commission and City Council and 12 pop-ups or INTERCEPT events where we've gone out to the community at community events. In October 2023, the City Council established its high-level vision for future growth and development. In December 2023, we returned to the City Council with a proposed structure for the General Plan Update as well as draft guiding policies. The City Council provided direction at that time and gave a thumbs up to the proposed structure. So the draft policies we'll be presenting today are organized into nine elements. The environmental justice and public health element will be new and is now required under state law. We are also choosing to add a sustainability element and the Travis protection element because we want to adequately address those issues and we want to signal our dedication to supporting the Travis Air Base and also advancing sustainability here in Fairfield. The draft policies illuminate the vision for growth and development. The guiding policies represent the broad direction and big-picture ideas and the implementing policies aim to achieve those broader, big-picture ideas. Again, the draft policies are informed by over three years of public input. Over that time, we've learned what issues are important to the community and the varied needs that need to be addressed. In addition to the ongoing public engagement, we held two public workshops in January to solicit additional input on draft policies as well as a staff workshop and many stakeholder meetings, many with staff and then also others with community-based organizations like Sustainable Solano and the Fairfield Community Foundation. The land use element provides information on the population growth that will result from this general plan. This General Plan Update will result in approximately 13,500 new housing units and 7.2 million square feet of non-residential uses. One major consideration of driving these numbers is that we'll be required to develop three housing elements over the 25-year period. Each of those housing elements will come with regional housing needs allocation numbers that we must plan for. This growth will result in an estimated population of about 151,000 residents total or about 31,000 new residents. We'd like to emphasize that the General Plan Update policies and proposed improvements aim to support this new population growth. So we understand that adding over 30,000 new residents will result in increased traffic, increased needs for services, and those kinds of things. And so we are planning for how to do that now so that we can meet those future needs. The land use element also proposes land use designations. Land use designations also identify density levels and intensity levels and come along with a land use diagram that applies designations to specific geographic areas. The designations are intended to be broad enough to provide flexibility but clear and specific enough to provide direction. This is the land use diagram. I'm not going to go too far into it and please don't strain your eyes. However, it has, it lists the proposed land use designations, which include agricultural designations, open space designations, residential, commercial, mixed-use, industrial designations, as well as some others like public facilities and specific plan areas. Many of the land use designations remain the same. I'd like to focus on several where there are proposed changes. First, with medium residential, I'd like to flag that as written, the proposed language would require any, excuse me. As written, the medium residential designation is intended for attached housing like duplexes and townhomes. As written, it would require any detached, single-family homes to include home projects, to include a percentage of affordable units. Staff have commented that this is, this policy is redundant because the housing element already directs staff to begin working on a citywide inclusionary housing ordinance. For that reason, staff have recommended to remove this language so, and therefore, remove that redundancy. The Business Flex land use designation is primarily, is applied to the Cordelia area along Business Center Drive. It would allow, the purpose of the Business Flex District is to attract new jobs and function as an employment center. It would allow both industrial uses and office uses and aim to knit together those uses and provide a seamless development pattern by requiring high-quality landscaping and design. Finally, we have three new mixed-use land use designations. I'll get more specific into each of these later in the presentation. However, each of the mixed-use designations permits a specific mix of land uses to facilitate the vision for that geographical area. I'd like to note that horizontal mixed use is permitted and we'll be looking to both the Planning Commission and City Council for a direction on horizontal mixed use at a later date. Horizontal mixed use are projects where there may be a residential building next to a commercial building and together those two buildings are mixed use. The land use element ensures that growth, or excuse me, the land use element plans for future growth and development across the city. Policies aim to improve urban design and guide development within key focus areas. The Travis Protection Element ensures that the city's growth plans protect the long-term viability of the Travis Air Force Base. Policies in this element will guide development at the enhanced use lease area, enhance emergency evacuation routes, and address military personal needs relating to things like housing and transportation. The circulation element aims to strengthen circulation network to meet evolving mobility modes and needs. Key policies in this element include requiring development to pay its fair share for transportation infrastructure, balancing vehicle miles traveled reduction with maintaining level of service standards, and expanding equitable access to infrastructure. The public facilities and services element enhances public facilities and services such as emergency services, utilities, and parks. These policies aim to maintain the city's excellent public services, again, require development to pay its fair share of services, and implement financing solutions to fund services. The open space conservation and recreation element aims to preserve and enhance our open spaces as well as conserve natural resources. These policies aim to preserve agricultural lands, conserve open spaces, and protect wildlife and habitats. It also aims to enhance and expand our park and recreation systems and programs. The sustainability element provides a framework for responsibly using and conserving our city's natural resources. We do this by addressing climate change, expanding the urban tree canopy, and reducing reliance on vehicles. The health and safety element works with other elements to create a safe environment for all stakeholders. Policies address geological hazards, urban fires and wildfire, flooding, as well as other safety hazards. The environmental justice element, excuse me, the environmental justice and public health element is a new element required under state law. It advances equity by addressing disparities in health outcomes. It does this by addressing and monitoring air quality, expanding access to healthy foods, engaging stakeholders, and investing in areas based on need. The economic development element advances economic development objectives to strengthen our economy as well as create jobs. We aim to do this by strengthening existing industries and attracting new industries, revitalizing existing commercial areas, bolstering agritourism in Sussoon Valley, and enhancing collaboration between educational providers and businesses. I'd like to note that there are many, many policies in this draft, proposed policies in this General Plan Update, and so I've just touched on some of them. I'd also like to note that every element is equally important and works with all of the other elements to achieve the broader community vision and higher-level goals and objectives. I'd like to focus on several citywide policies that address priority issues and needs for the community. Firstly, affordable housing. The housing element, which was adopted in early 2023 due to state-mandated timeframes, addresses generation of new affordable housing in a variety of ways. Two examples are pursuing financing measures such as bonds and developing an inclusionary housing ordinance. Our staff are currently working on developing and studying a potential inclusionary housing ordinance. In general, these ordinances require a percentage of new units within a development to be affordable. We're looking to facilitate new shopping areas and services throughout the city. Several examples is in Cordelia, we're looking to facilitate a new grocery store as well as new shopping. We're also looking to revitalize Solano Town Center and North Texas Street, also facilitating new shopping at those locations. The draft policies address public health in a variety of ways. I've mentioned a couple already. And another key aspect of our strategy for addressing public health is by advancing health equity, by incorporating health equity criteria during capital improvement planning and prioritization. And finally, to address and advance social equity, we have several policies. Examples are directing programs and investments to areas with the greatest need. For example, if we had a grant to build new sidewalks, we would look at which areas throughout the city have the greatest need for repaired or new sidewalks. And that would be one factor that we would consider. I'd also like to highlight certain focus areas throughout the city. These areas are envisioned for revitalization or transformation by the City Council. In the Cordelia area, we have the Cordelia-Susun Gateway. This is envisioned to be a higher-end lifestyle center that functions as a gateway to Sussoon Valley and also attracts visitors as well as local residents. Our draft policies aim to do this by facilitating a mix of higher-end experiential retail and restaurants such as wine bars, lodging, as well as higher-density housing. So it would be a mixed-use area. Placemaking and design requirements such as requiring a gathering place like a plaza will help to create this a destination for residents and visitors. We've already touched on Business Center Drive. We heard from the community that Business Center Drive lacks cohesiveness. And so we're looking to do that by attracting job-generating uses, which are also greatly needed, prohibiting further warehouses, and requiring high-quality design that helps transition industrial businesses and buildings to office buildings. In Sussoon Valley, we have a number of policies that look to support agriculture through collaboration with Solano County and with stakeholders. Specifically, we're looking to support agrotourism as well, excuse me, we're looking to support agritourism and agriculture in a variety of ways. One policy that I'd like to bring to your attention opens the door to new service agreements with the county where they're mutually beneficial. So if this policy were to be adopted, it would allow the City Council to develop service agreements, for example, by providing water services or sewer services or any other city service. Another key focus area is Hill Ranch. It's approximately 200 acres abutting aniser bush. Policies aim to limit future development to specific industries that support agriculture and agrotourism. Warehousing would be permitted, excuse me, prohibited. Warehousing would be prohibited. And we would look to facilitate food manufacturing, agrotech, and agro sciences. Another goal for this area would be creating a center for family-sustaining and career-building jobs. Finally, we have several focus areas in central Fairfield. The City Council would like to revitalize Solano Town Center and we, our draft policies look to do this by facilitating a wide range of new uses, including retail, entertainment, and recreation, community facilities like a community center or a public plaza or a public park, and also services like office buildings. In the heart of Fairfield, draft policies look to enhance and implement the specific plan's vision and develop a transportation-oriented development area with high-density mixed-use development. Along North Texas Street, there is a vision for mixed-use nodes. It would also promote higher-density housing. However, the commercial components would be more geared to serving the day-to-day needs of residents. Some of you have shared topics and areas that you'd like to receive more information about. Going, so with regards to financial institutions, banks are not currently addressed in the draft policies. However, we've also researched our existing policies on check-cashing. To take a step back and provide some additional context, this Planning Commissioner would like to ensure equitable access to banks while limiting check-cashing businesses. So, banks are not currently addressed and check-cashing businesses are currently conditionally permitted in two zoning districts underneath the land use of alternative financial institutions. We've consulted legal on this matter. If you were to, you are able to further restrict these alternative financial institutions, again, they're conditionally permitted in two zoning districts, you could reduce that to one. However, we do want to note that if you reduced, that would apply to all alternative financial institutions and not only check-cashing businesses. Another example within that category is payday loans. Another Planning Commissioner asked about prioritizing local residents for affordable housing, and this conflicts with state and federal laws. Another Commissioner asked about school district services, busing children to and from schools in order to reduce traffic and improve safety. This would, the, this school district service would be under the jurisdiction of the school district. It is possible to add policies, directing staff to advocate for this service to the school district. I'd also like to note that our trans, public transportation provider, Fast, does offer routes that go to schools and also has a Cordelia School Tripper, which is coordinated with school starting and ending times. Another topic that you've requested information on is equity between the quality of different school, public school facilities, and this is driven by state funding mechanisms. Finally, one Planning Commissioner noted that Solano County lacks a four-year college and suggested that the General Plan Update address this, potentially by pursuing a UC or Cal State satellite location. So all of these policies are up, you know, we defer to you as to what your direction is. We can provide additional guidance and we can discuss those shortly. Finally, we've requested input from Solano County and Sussoon Valley Vintners and Growers Association. We did not hear back in time to incorporate their input into this presentation, but we do expect to receive it in time for presentation to the City Council on May 21st. As to next steps, the City Council will meet on this very topic on May 21st. Staff will present your recommendations to the City Council at this time. This information will also be provided in advance in the agenda report to the City Council and to the public. The Planning Commission's next meeting on this project is to discuss strategies for reducing greenhouse gas emissions as part of the Climate Action Plan on June 12th. As I mentioned, we're going to release Draft General Plan Update, Environmental Impact Review, and Climate Action Plan documents in the summer of 2024 for public review and engagement. We will hold a final study session with City Council and then hold public hearings in the fall of 2024 leading up to adoption. The discussion format tonight, and I, would you like to pause for public comment before we move on to the discussion?
So, just as a reminder, tonight, we're not taking formal action. And this might be an opportune time to start with a question from the Commission. And then after, those have been general questions, you know, as Ms. Hernandez has mentioned, we'll go in to the elements specifically and have more detailed questions and discussion at that time. But I think it would be well for us to open it up for general discussion on what's been presented and then open for public comment after that. Does that sound good?
Yeah, I think questions from the Commission, not necessarily detailed discussions, but questions, public comment, and then we'll come back and Jessie would lead you through a discussion on each topic or each element.
Right.
Your actual comments.
So I know in the past few meetings, we've been sort of going around the horn on questions So I know in the past few meetings, we've been sort of going around the horn on questions, but given that we're going to have a long discussion here on various topics, I'd like to suggest that for tonight, if you have comments, we just speak up, and if you don't, then we'll, we'll move on with that. Is that acceptable to everyone? Okay, so, given that format, what questions do you have, again, in a general nature, not in a specific nature?
I just have a comment, not questions, on this. Great presentation, appreciate it. You laid it out very well, and so what, the questions will be easier when we get to the question portion, so thank you, good job.
I just wanted, total clarity, we're only going to be talking about the land use element tonight, is that correct?
No, we, we're looking for recommendations regarding all draft policies and all elements.
Thank you. But, but I think we'll, we'll go through them element by element, so, so we don't jump all over the place, we'll start with land use, get your comments, see if you all concur with those comments, then move on to the next element.
No comments at this time, thank you.
All right, again, excellent presentation. I now open the public comment period. I have one card from Monica Brown. If there are others that wish to speak, please fill out a green card.
Hi, Monica Brown on the Board of Supervisors, and I live in Cordelia, and thank you for having air conditioning that works. I want to just mention with, when you got to the college, I was a trustee at Solano Community College, we do have a four-year degree program in biotech. It's on the main, it's on the campus in Vacaville. We also have Tuero University, we also have Cal State Maritime Academy, because I'm attending the commencement on Saturday. We also have, through the community college, with reach outs with Sonoma State, which isn't that far away, Sac State, we all have that, so I just wanted to bring that to your attention. For me, what, one of the concerns I have is that you have written down for Hale Ranch what you want to do, but it's still county property. So, I'm just letting, I just wanted to remind everybody. The other is that the Nelson Hill Study Area and permit up to 250 units, so why are we studying it if the city council already voted, what, six to one, that they wanted to put homes there, which I don't believe there should be homes there. I still want to know who's going to pay for the infrastructure, how are you going to get up on that hill, what is it that you're going to do? And Cordelia Road has to still stay two lanes, no matter what you do, guys, you can't, you can't extend it out. Some of those people who own homes there and have, and for generations are going to be very upset. I find it amusing that, because I don't understand, okay, when you are developing an area, you do set aside land for a school. So just on my side of the world, because I taught at Green Valley, we are going to have surplus schools. They might not be necessarily where you want them to be, but we're going to have surplus schools. We have 1,000 school districts in the state of California, all of them are losing enrollment. People are just not having babies. So, and the other question that I had was, why can't you make some of this land deed restricted? So, you know, they get a 45-year mortgage, deed restricted, so that it's only the owner can never be rented out, so that we have people who buy into the community literally, so they feel like they're part of the community? And so I'm just curious on, on that particular one. We'll see how this all plays out, but as somebody who's lived in my home now for almost 35 years, I don't see how the traffic's going to get any better. Come to, come to Rodriguez at three in the afternoon, and I wish you luck. The buses don't show up right then, guys, I'm just sharing with you. I know exactly what time I have to leave in the morning, seven, otherwise I'm going to get caught in traffic. So, and I love the fact that we have a high school there, don't get me wrong, but I just, I'm looking at how you guys think this all is going to work out, and I did do Rena for the county, so I am familiar with that. And we're down to three, two, one, so I did pretty good. And by the way, my A's won last night, yes. So, life is good. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Monica, and thank you for your service to the community. Are there any other speakers that would like to come forward in the public hearing portion? I see no hands raised online, so I will close the public comment period. I do want to just make one comment, too, about the college degree. Solano Community College can only offer degrees that are not offered in the UC system, so bio, med is one, there's another one that I can't remember. And I would also like to just extend a comment towards the community college. They have over 1,000 students in our prison, and the average grade point of those students, 3.85. So that's a wonderful program that they're doing, and I, just because that brought up, I wanted to make a couple of those comments. So, at this point, I think we turn it back to Ms. Hernandez to lead us through the elements specifically, and then we'll have comments, chance to comment on, in a more detailed fashion. Please continue.
The discussion, we suggest proceed by topic or by element. Please remember that the general plan update plans for growth and development through the lens of physical development. So there are other topics that are outside, that are, would not be addressed by this plan. There is also existing city council direction, and so we're requesting recommendations about how to implement their direction. We will be looking for as much consensus as, to identify consensus wherever possible. And so, we may follow up with questions after hearing a comment from one planning commissioner, we may ask for others' thoughts on that topic. So our two questions are, do the draft policies sufficiently address community issues and needs? And are there any gaps within the scope of the general, what the general plan update addresses?
Is that, now you're ready for that discussion?
Yeah, if you have any questions or would like any additional information, please let me know. Otherwise, please chime in, are there any, do you have any comments on any of the policies or policy areas?
And I think we want to go by, by, if you can lead them by, by topic, Liz.
Okay.
Starting, I think, with land use, with the land use element.
So we can start with the land use element. Does anyone have comments on draft land use policies? Some policies guide future development citywide, other policies guide development at specific focus areas, and then another subset of policies addresses urban design throughout the city.
I have comments. Okay, so on the policies, the summary of draft policies, center mixed use, would that entail, I, because I, I get what the city's trying to create with the restaurants and shopping and stuff, is there, is everybody kind of looking at maybe creating an outside corridor on, say like on the north side of, of the mall, where you can have maybe some additional buildings built, and you have a walkway where you've got some entertainment out there, some restaurants, some other retail, so that people don't want to go into the mall itself, but you, but they want to go to dinner and stuff, you can have some of that outdoor entertainment, you know, outside seating, you know, beer gardens, things like that. So, that's one that I have. And then the other, is on the gateway mixed use, so, I think it's overreaching on the permitted densities, because allowing 300 homes that could go as few as 18 to an acre, that would allow almost 17 acres for housing, even though it's 300 houses, which would be 42% of that land, and 42% of that land would be a shame when 280,000 cars right now a day are passing that, and we'd be losing a lot of that, that commercial, commercial aspect and sales tax revenue generation. So I have, I, I see that, you know, in, if those houses were removed, ideally, with the 31,000-plus houses that, that is in this plan, that'd be less than 1% of all the, of all the houses. So I, I'd really like to see more commercial, less residential in that area, and maybe tie a couple of those properties that are just on the other side of the Sassoon Valley Parkway to that, because they kind of join each other, campus lane area, some of that stuff on Sassoon Valley Road where, where we've got the Innovation Center that Wiseman's doing, and the parcels next to West America. So, just so it's, it's more of a coordinated effort to create a proper mix of, of business, residential, and things like that. And then, one thing that kind of, if you could clarify, is in the land use plan on page 17, for the train station-specific plan, LU 19.2, focus and reduce the area within the community commercial land designation from 17 acres to 10 acres to reflect market realities, and allow development to occur with either mixed-use or residential-only uses. There again, we're taking, you know, almost half of that land possibly, and converting it to residential, which is in part of 31,000. And there again, we're diluting our, our, our sales tax base for the, you know, for the future, because sales taxes from businesses create long-term benefits to the city tax-wise, where some of the housing is, is just very short-term gain, so I have a concern about that. And then, yep, that's all I have right now.
Thank you, Commissioner Kennedy. Other comments about land use element only at this point?
May I clarify a comment?
Yes.
You said that we were overreaching on permitted densities, and you said that for the gateway mixed-use area, and you said that there would be too much acreage dedicated to housing. Do you mean that the densities are too high and too dense, or are they too low? Because higher densities would reduce the acreage dedicated to housing.
I'm a horizontal person for, for mixed use, not.
Vertical?
Not sprawl, yeah.
Okay, vertical.
Yeah.
So you want to.
I'd rather go up, so then that way there's more, more, more availability of commercial uses for, for the land, since that's going to be what it's, I mean, it's the gateway. And if anybody's watching, gateway is, for those of us in the Cordelia-Green Valley area, that is the, the old truck scales, not Gateway Plaza at the Solano County Mall, so that's the Solano Mall. So, so we've got two gateways, and, and we just need everybody to understand that this Gateway Plaza should almost be like maybe Green Valley Gateway Plaza, or Gateway Mixed Use, because it's kind of a, makes sense that it's gateway to the wine country, but.
Yeah, I think the idea is it's gateway to Sassoon Valley, the Sassoon Valley gateway, yeah.
As opposed to the named gateway.
And to implement your recommendation, would you restrict all mixed use to being vertical, and/or would you increase the minimum density?
I would prefer higher density per acre, yes.
Thank you.
Other commissioner comments about Commissioner Kennedy's suggestions or, or other concerns that you have?
The current discussion does bring to mind the comment earlier about horizontal mixed use, and could you explain a little bit more about that, so it would be considered mixed use, if you could, if you had like a home or a neighborhood next to a commercial property, can you clarify that a bit more for me?
Yes, so, vertical mixed use is when there's a residential and non-residential use in the same building. Horizontal mixed use can be done in different ways. It can have a large parcel with multiple uses, like an apartment building next to a retail shop or a restaurant. Another way to do horizontal mixed use is having multiple uses next to each other, even if they're on separate parcels. One thing to note is that we're looking to facilitate mixed use in multiple areas. On the old Garaventa Truck Stop site, which we're now currently calling Cordelia-Sassoon Gateway, that's a very large parcel. It would be easier for them to fit multiple uses onto one parcel compared to, for example, the North Texas Corridor, which has more smaller parcels.
Okay.
And staff can, if, if you have direction, recommendations or direction, staff can identify ways to implement your direction. For example, if you were looking to allow horizontal use across multiple properties, we could require, we could allow mixed use across multiple properties if they come in together under the same development proposal.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. That is exactly what I was thinking.
So is that what you would recommend?
Yes, that is exactly what I was going to say next. Thank you for making it easier tonight.
Commissioner Green?
Yes. Jesse, on the land use, table 2X, page 11, talks about agricultural intensive and extensive, one single family dwelling per parcel. Okay, frequently, when you have agricultural families, they will have more like a family compound, and they will have more than one home. Are, are we going to be able to allow that under this guideline? Or are we going to be restricted to one home per parcel? And it doesn't matter how big the parcel is, obviously, either.
We would apply it as it's written, so if that's not appropriate for addressing community needs, we would love to hear your recommendation on that issue.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments on land use? One, one comment, did I miss someone? Okay. Yes. One, one comment that I have is about parking and the requirements for parking, given the fact that over 30 years, we may see a major change in automobile driving and traffic. And I just want to make sure that there's enough flexibility in the program to be able to address that over several decades.
So I think what you're suggesting, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but to include a policy to evaluate the city's parking standards, to ensure, you know, that as, you know, as we promote higher densities, potentially in, reduced car use, things like that, you know, we, we meet, we meet virtually for a lot of meetings, things like that, meet the car less, maybe we need fewer cars, maybe our parking standards are too. our parking standards are too high to encourage, a, a, a policy to encourage evaluating our, our parking standards.
Right, typically for retail, it's between five to 10, uh, per stalls per, uh, thousand square feet. That likely will change significantly and will potentially free up a lot more use of land for purposes other than parking. And I'm not suggesting that that's the case now, clearly, but that's the direction that we're headed and, and I just wanna see that, uh, the policies reflect, um, flexibility in making that change.
Mr. Chairman? Can I make a comment? Can I make a comment on that? I, I think the one thing we have to take into account though is even though our houses, you know, are, are designed to grow kids up in, it, right now, generationally, it's changing to where multiple generations are living in a house. Uh, you may have your parents living with you and those type things. So a lot of times that creates actually more cars per dwelling than fewer cars because you have more, uh, people that are drive, that are over 16 because of your multi-generational housing to, uh, because of the cost of living in this, in this state for, uh, for families, they have to, uh, double up a little bit. So just take that into consideration also, please.
Yeah, I, I agree and I think we may see more of that, especially with our younger generation. Um, but the, I'm just saying, I wanna make sure that there's flexibility as those, uh, needs change, that we don't have fixed mandates, um, and that could have a really substantial impact on how we use land. So, um-
I was just gonna-
Commissioner Warble?
Thank you, just to comment on that too, I like that flexibility, but I think it should also incentivize us to have housing retail where you don't need to use your car. But right now, I think in our city, you, you have to have a vehicle to go from point A to point B, so I think it's very important to, to take that into consideration as well.
Thank you. So, uh, what I think we wanna do is gather up comments on each element here so that staff will have sufficient feedback to give to the city council in their next meeting. Do we wanna try to summarize it and maybe Jesse, you could summarize what you've heard or, or Dave?
Yeah, I've been, I've been keeping, uh, notes of what I've heard. I, I think we have, uh, some more questions, comments?
Please.
Just one more comment, I, and just, I just wanna publicly state and definitely in favor of the piece about the Travis Air Force Base and reserving that and those elements. I think that's, um, should be a high priority for us. Thank you.
I think we'll get to that element specifically in just a minute, but thank you. Uh, so we're, we're just talking land use now. So Dave, why don't you summarize what you've heard?
Yeah, so if, if we've heard, so it sounds like there's general support for what you've read with a few, few additions or, or minor modifications. Let me see if I can characterize what I, what I heard and before I do that, I'll, I did, I did hear one question, I think that was from Commissioner Kennedy about the mall and I think that vision that you described with, you know, more uses on the outside of the mall, uh, you know, greater connections between those uses, what's going on in the mall, uh, you know, some green space, green connections, things like that. I think that's exactly the, the vision, uh, that we're looking at to explore, uh, as we revitalize, uh, Solano Town Center. So, you know, just to clarify that. So the things I heard, uh, Commissioner Kennedy, for the, uh, for the, uh, Cordelia-Susun Gateway project, uh, for that 44-ish acre parcel, you, uh, you want the policies to promote, uh, more vertical mixed use, uh, on that site and higher densities than what's called for in the policy right now. Um, it sounds like you're not-
With that 300-home maximum.
With, with a 300-home maximum, okay. Um, uh, you suggest not reducing the amount of commercial in the town center portion of the train station specific plan, uh, from 17 to 10 to keep it, uh, with more commercial. Uh, uh, let's see, Commissioner Evans suggests, um, that our, our policies support horizontal mixed use, potentially on separate properties, but only if it's as a part of a larger coordinated development project, um, and not, you know, piece by piece by piece, you know, later on you're, you're bringing in the residential, but as a part of a coordinated project. Um, and then Commissioner Matthews, uh, it sounds like you'd like, uh, a policy to encourage us and again, I'm, you're looking for flexibility on parking. I think that's a policy that directs us to evaluate our parking standards to ensure that they are, uh, that they are in line, and we can craft some wording here, that they're in line with both current and anticipated future parking, uh, demand environment, shall we say. That's what we heard. Uh, did I miss anything? No?
I, I don't know if this is the, if this is in the right spot, but we really do need to, I believe we need to look at the language we're using for agricultural, uh, for one single home per, per, uh, parcel.
Okay.
Um, because many, many times what families do and, and is they'll have multiple homes, uh, for a family farm, all on the same parcel.
Got it. So essentially, it's a, it's a housing, it's a, a, a complex of housing for the, for the, for the family or the caretaker, uh, unit of the, of, of the farm?
True, but the one thing I don't want to have happen is that all of a sudden you have a, an, a, an agricultural entity that decides that they can build, you know, 27 houses on the property. I don't want that to happen, but I do want that if there's family members, generational, that they can build on that same parcel, especially if it's a large parcel.
A family compound.
Correct.
Got it. So it's, essentially it's a single unit of, or it's serving a single unit, that family, but it could be more than-
Multiple, individual homes.
More than one houses. Okay, and so we'll add that as, uh, as a suggestion, so.
May I ask, would accessory dwelling units serve that purpose? Um, because under state law, a single-family home would be permitted to build one detached ADU as well as one junior ADU. So theoretically that is up to three units.
Probably not. You're going to, you're going to have, you know, mom and dad or grandma and grandpa and mother and father and daughter and husband, and they are gonna have three homes and they may be 1,600 square feet and they may, may be 3,600 square feet. They're going to have individual family homes, but it's, but they frequently put them all on within, it, it's more efficient for them, they actually waste less ground for farming and so on.
Okay, I think we've, I think we've got that.
Uh, Jesse, just before we conclude this, will you bring up the slide that shows the different elements that we're gonna be discussing? And what I was wondering is, okay, so ag is not a separate one, so we should include any ag-related comments in the land use?
We can, there are ag-related policies throughout the elements. Um, land use, open space and conservation, economic development, um, and even, and less directly, environmental justice and public health, all include policies related to agriculture.
I think, uh, because they, they cross so many elements, if you have particular comments, you know, I think the land use element probably is the, is the one that's sort of, the broadest one. Uh, I think we're happy to take your comments while we're talking land use, um, and we'll figure out, you know, i- if they're supported by the commission as a whole, we'll figure out where, where they're best, uh, where they best live within the, within the elements.
Thank you. So commissioners, are there, um, items that were not included in Mr. Feinstein's summary that you think we ought to include? And if not, rather than have a formal vote, we kinda wanna have a thumbs up, are you in agreement that that's what the, the planning commission wants to have staff present to the city council?
I just have a question about the, um, ag tourism. Is that gonna be under ED or are we talking about that now when we talk about agriculture? Or just if it longer, or only if it's related to the land or are we just adding this on as a sub-topic for right now?
Yeah, I, I think because it's general enough, you know, the agricultural related issues, I mean, yes, it's an ED topic, but if you, if you'd like to, if you'd like to raise it now, we'll make sure that it gets, that the comments are applied, uh, in, in the appropriate section. So if you'd like to talk about that now, I think, I think that's okay.
So my comment, um, so I was the commissioner that talked about having that satellite or that connection with our Cal systems and UC systems and in no way does that take away from Solano Community College, um, and what they do and the other colleges in our county. Um, but I think it does tie in, especially when we're talking about ag, having programs, even with UC Davis and how we can incorporate that within our community to help promote the ag tourism, um, and also education. So I think that's important to have that connection.
So if I'm hearing you, you'd like some language in, in the general plan that encourages the city to coordinate with, uh, local educational institutions to help support agricultural tourism and agriculture?
That would be correct.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other comments? If not, are we thumbs up? Okay.
All right.
Thumbs up.
Very good.
Let's move to the next element. I'm sorry, did I miss something?
We're just laughing.
Yeah, I think, I think we saw a general consensus that that list are all supportable things to recommend to the council. Okay.
Great. Um, next is the circulation element. It proposes specific roadway, bike, pedestrian, bicycle infrastructure improvements. Um, it looks to meet the evolving needs of, for mobility. And I'll pull up my overview slide here. Um, do you think the draft policies are sufficient and are they, there any gaps?
Any comments on circulation?
This'll scare you, but I have zero.
Uh, I have one and, I don't know, maybe it's just up for discussion because I know that, um, under SEQA, we always look at, uh, vehicle miles traveled, but how do we address, um, vehicle impact in other ways? Because I understand that vehicle miles traveled is, um, how far it is to get, say, from like your house to a store. But what I feel like is a concern amongst residents is the amount of vehicles on the road, even because vehicle miles traveled doesn't really speak to the fact that there's 60 of us trying to get to the school, if that makes sense, right? The school is within five miles, but there's 60 of us at the same time trying to get in the five miles. So I'm wondering if there is a way that we can address that impact or would that just be lost in translation because of state laws?
And Jesse, I don't know, maybe you can talk or if you prefer I do, that's fine, uh, about the analysis of, uh, roadway impacts and needs for, for roadway improvements that's ongoing?
Yes, um, so we are still conducting our analysis of needs for improvements, both short-term and long-term. Um, so we are currently looking at that.
Yeah, so essentially, uh, as Jesse mentioned earlier, we're looking at 13,500 new housing units. Um, I can't remember if it was called out up there, but in the document it talks about seven million square feet of non-residential development. Very clearly over a 25 to 30-year period, that is going to definitely have some sort of an impact on our circulation system. Uh, yes, from a SEQA standpoint, we look at vehicle miles traveled, but we also wanna make sure that we are building a circulation network that not only accommodates that new growth, but also looks at issues, you know, if we've got, uh, congestion around, uh, you know, uh, Rodriguez High School, things like that, are there things we can do to help improve that? So as a part of this general plan update, we are doing an analysis of that. So today we're looking at the policies. When we come back with the draft general plan, there'll actually be, uh, a, a set of roadway improvements that are proposed, uh, to help address, uh, that issue. So it's not really a policy issue so much as, you can call it a program of the general plan is, uh, evaluating and making recommendations with the general plan for those circulation improvements. So more to come on that. It's, it's, it's a work in progress that we'll have with the draft general plan.
Okay, and then I, um, I do have another suggestion of just, um, I'm hoping that there could be some kind of, um, some kind of well-synched program to try to encourage people to get, uh, to try to encourage people to use, um, different modes of transportation, like bikes and, um, buses, whatever we have. Um, and I know that we're doing a lot to make, um, the city more bike-friendly, but I also wanna add that we need more, um, like bike racks and bike stores and bike repair shops and things like that. So I would like to see more of an in-sync, um, kind of like promotion of whatever the methods are that we're, we're trying to, to, to push to get people to drive less, essentially. Um, I, I just think that that would be nice, so.
So it sounds like policy, you know, have, have a policy that not only looks at the the infra, you know, the, 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 the road infrastructure, a bike lane or a bike path, but the full range of bike infrastructure and services to promote, to, to better promote all of that?
Yes, thank you.
Got it, okay. Including bike racks, bike shops, all that kinda thing. Yep, sure.
Commissioner Green?
Thank you. I'd like to really piggyback on that a little bit, uh, that I don't know if it's in here or not, but when we do new development, and I don't care if it is, uh, a warehouse or if it's housing, that a certain amount of money from the developer has to go towards improving the safety and expansion of areas to ri- to ride bicycles. I do not, uh, I don't ride it near as much as I used to and I don't enjoy it because you take your life in your hands on a lot of these roads today. So if we're going to want to encourage people to ride, we've gotta give them a place to do it safely. And the only way that's gonna happen is if we, if we either widen roads or make some dedicated pathways and that's gotta be paid for somehow.
Thank you. Um, on that same related topic, linear trail is, um, something that you do have cited here, but it would be nice to have some added support for bicycle traffic infrastructure along that, uh, linear trail. And while I'm talking, would, um, electronic vehicle, uh, infrastructure be appropriate in this element or, uh, in the, in another one, in the environment?
I think it'd be appropriate in multiple elements, including this one.
Well, sort of, uh, on the same line of, um, discussion for bicycles, I think we should have policies, um, helping to build the infrastructure for charging for electronic vehicles, electrical vehicles. And in full disclosure, I own one.
I do have one comment. It, can I suggest maybe the city in, I don't know, um, working a little bit closer with the school district, um, in regards to, cause I, I know that school start times and stuff are, some are, are regulated by state law for the high school- some are regulated by state law for the high school kids have to go later now. But in the Cordelia, with Green Valley and Rodriguez, they get out within about 10 minutes of each other. So creates a humongous bottleneck at Red Top and Lopes, or Gold Hill and Lopes, sorry, to the point that everything backs up 300, 400, 500 yards in each, all four corners, to the point that Interstate 80, the on-ramp, the Interstate 680, sorry, backs up onto Lopes Road. And if they just juggled those times like 10 minutes, one gets out 10 minutes earlier and one gets out 10 minutes later, just that little bit would alleviate an enormous amount of traffic at that really congested point in time at like, you know. So that was the only other thing. And then fast, the fast busing, it's really working now. I know they had some hiccups when it first started because it was so novel, but it's really working well out there right now. And I, they need their props for that, so.
Okay. So I, I'm the guy that kicked the hornet's nest on, on busing. And I, I do recognize that that is not the city's purview. However, we, we can put pressure on the school districts. And talking about your traffic issues, if we were putting 50 kids on a bus instead of 50 cars taking 50 kids home, number one, the safety element, the, the information is out there. It's very easy to find. It's 50 times, I'm surprised I said that before, there's 50, it's 50 times safer to be on a school bus than it is for your loving parent to take you to school. And that, those are national statistics. So when we look at this and, and our schools say we can't afford it, I disagree. I believe that we could get the entire community, all areas of the community could become supportive of the additional cost of supporting a bus system and the employees that would require to carry those buses from multiple levels, including health.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I would just like clarification on the, well, two things. One, clarification on the analysis that's being conducted and how that analysis is going to flow into the general plan. And then my second comment about the buses, is that safety from a vehicle standpoint or a mental health and social standpoint? I'm curious for that.
I can respond to that. From a safety, physical safety standpoint, from a greenhouse gas point of view, the, the information is overwhelming that busing is a far better way from an economic point of view or for an equity point of view. You can have a young child that their parents couldn't get them. We have a great school system here. And then we enable young kids to go to specific schools that they fit better in from, from a level of maybe they're a math and science student. Well, if we have busing that's set up, those kids that maybe wouldn't have been able to get to that school now can. It also encourages timeliness and it takes tremendous pressure off of the parents.
I appreciate that comment. And my only public comment would be, I think we need, we have it backwards. We need to look at the school districts to make sure that these programs are offered to all the schools and not just into certain schools so that we have to bus certain kids to certain schools so they can get that top quality education. There's a problem with the system.
So I think it's important to remember the school district is independent, but still, what I'm hearing you both say and other comments as well, is that we want to encourage the communication and a potential adjustments to the schedule that would favorably impact the, the circulation flow. Is that a fair way to summarize what you're saying? Are we ready to now ask for summary from staff? Or do you want to make any more comments on the circulation element? Okay, let's hear the summary.
Yeah, okay, here's what I, what we heard from Commissioner Evans to include policy language to, let's see what I've got here, to expand our, not just the bike network, but also the whole range of bike support services and infrastructure, bike racks, bike stores, things like that. From Commissioner Greevy, you would like new development policy for new development to be required to help fund bike circulation improvements and infrastructure improvements. Let's see, Commissioner Matthews, and I, I believe there are a collection of policies in there, but we'll, we'll note this and make sure that you want policies clearly directing the city to expand our electric vehicle infrastructure. And I think charging is one of the primary things you're, you're referring to. Let's see, Commissioner Kennedy noted that you would like, and I think we can find out the right word to word this, but essentially for the city to coordinate with the school district or encourage the, the school district to evaluate their start and end times for the day to create a more efficient traffic flow, potentially, potentially better staggering start and end times for schools that are close to each other. And so you've got those schools over in Cordelia, you also have Vanden, Golden West Center School over in the Travis School District as well. Let's see. Commissioner Warblin, I think what I'm hearing from you is you'd like the city to encourage the school district to expand bus services broadly across all their schools. Is that?
I probably would just say I'm not in favor of the busing. I'm more in favor of-
Are you not in favor of busing?
No, just more in favor of quality education in all of our schools. Which is outside of this, the planning commission. So I'm just publicly making this statement in response to my fellow commissioner.
Okay. So I'm, I'm not sure, did we have a, a suggestion about busing or leave everything as is?
Well, what I heard from Commissioner Greevy was to figure out if there are policies that we can adopt that would help encourage the school district to do more busing. Is that correct?
To, to a point, that is correct. And, and one, one of the issues, or I don't think it's an issue, I think it's a benefit to this, to the, our, our school districts here, I take my hat off to them, is that they do have schools that are specific to arts or sciences or whatever. And all the kids can go to all of those, but some of the kids clearly don't because it's too far to travel. If we have the busing in place, then the kids, any child that needs to get to those schools would be able to do so. But my, my primary focus on the busing is the safety, the la, the reduced traffic, and the encouragement. It also, on the studies that I've read, it also encourages more kids to go to school. There's less absenteeism when they are riding a bus.
So I guess my question for staff is, given the school district runs their own busing, is it appropriate for the planning commission to give input about policies that we think may affect the broader community but are under the purview of the school district?
Yeah, I, I don't think there's necessarily a yes or no. But what I'll say is if the idea is that encouraging the school district on busing matters may improve traffic flow, may, things like that, that are tied to the circulation, the effects, the impacts on the neighborhoods, things like that, I, I think it is appropriate. If it's a more social policy tied to school busing, probably not. But is, as it's, has a more effect on the physical neighborhoods, circulation system, things like that, then it's probably appropriate.
So what I'm really saying is that these are all benefits that I see. But that's not the, that's, that's, those are side benefits, okay? The primary reason I'm talking about it now is circulation. If we can reduce traffic and make it safer for kids, I mean, that, that in and of itself is a nutshell.
Okay.
Can I just add, I don't think it should just be looking at the district, it should be looking at whoever can bus. I think we should encourage whether it's the district, or I know right now FAST has some school tripper programs. If they can expand the service times, I think just encouraging busing conversations with whoever, you know, whoever is able, whether it be the district or, you know, STA, FAST, whomever. That's, that's my opinion. And I, I would like to suggest, if we can have some language to just say encourage more frequent busing for students.
And by extension, employers, where, where appropriate?
Great idea, yes.
Okay, so encourage more frequent busing, bus services for schools, employment?
Yes. The only thing that I'm concerned about with circulation is it's great to have language that, you know, where we're going to do more bike infrastructure and we're trying to reduce cars on the road, but we have to have ways to make that happen that's convenient. So we have to have bike racks, we have to have repair shops. If we're going to maybe reduce some traffic around school hours, we have to have more convenient times. Because right now, I know that some of the services only run, especially with going to Cordelia, they only run twice a day. So if you miss one bus that's there, a kid can't be late. So when we look at things like that, the devil's kind of in the details. That's, I know I'm trying to be brief so we can, you know, get to the rest of the 65 elements. That's just what I'm looking at, is like, how does it work? You know, the particulars. So I'm hoping that when we're looking at something broadly like circulation, we do get some kind of particulars in there that would address the efficiency of the overall plan. Thanks.
Thank you. So do you want to do a brief recap again?
Perhaps I'll, I'll summarize even, even shorter, I think. So policy on bike support services from Commissioner Evans, funding, new development funding bike improvements, Commissioner Greevy. Policy promoting expansion of bus service for students, employment, things like that. I think from Commissioner Greevy. From Commissioner Kennedy, direction to work with schools to evaluate or to, to explore changes in start times for schools that are close to each other to improve the traffic efficiency in those neighborhoods. What did I miss here? Policies about electric vehicle infrastructure and I think-
Linear trail, did you say that?
You mentioned the linear trail, wasn't quite clear what specifically-
As it related to bike infrastructure as a tack along.
So we have policies to promote completion of the linear park. Are there things beyond completing that network that you'd like?
Well, just as that plan is developed and then implemented, that it includes specific support for cycling.
Got it, so you want to amenity, you know, policies to amenitize the linear park with bike-supporting infrastructure.
Okay. Did that adequately summarize our commissioners' comments? And are we thumbs up? We are?
Yes.
Okay, next element.
And may I just ask, Jefferson?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, I was going to say, we're an hour and a half in. Do commissioners feel like a brief break would be appropriate?
Yes.
Okay. Five minute adjournment.
Good discussion.
Yeah, I think so. Yeah, I think so.
Together to.
From my perspective, that's an excellent idea. Any other?
We can do that.
Okay, first of all, meeting is back in order. What do you want to do, three or four together?
I think environmental justice and public health. Okay. Well, open space and conservation and sustainability and environmental justice and public health all relate closely. At the same time, we have a safety in public health, which is not, I'm realizing now is not shown on here, so I apologize. We have a safety in public health element as well that goes with the environmental justice.
Alternately, if you just want to provide your comments on what's left, we can, we can simplify that. We're doing a good job, I think, of summarizing.
Frankly, if the commissioners are in agreement, giving comments on all the remaining elements may be appropriate, given that we've kind of gone in depth on a number of elements that spread over those. What do you commissioners feel?
I like the chairperson's idea.
Okay, let's go over all the remaining elements now. And first we'll open it up to comments on those, any of the other elements that commissioners have.
Gathering thoughts here, so patience.
I don't remember if this was included because I read, I did my homework over the weekend and I forgot to make a note. But I'm also not sure if this would go under, I guess this would go under housing. Because I would like to see us bring back some programs that are, that have gone by the wayside, like, like neighborhood improvement programming, where you have like neighborhood dumpster days or like different programs for people to be able to apply for a grant to like revitalize their home. We might have something like that here, forgive me, I haven't. I didn't get a chance to look into it before I came today. But I know things like that used to be a lot bigger many moons ago. So if we don't have something like that, I would like to see more neighborhood revitalization programs.
Thank you. Other comments?
I can have one comment thus far. And I'm not sure if this falls under the environmental justice and public health or health and safety element. But when thinking about the health equity piece, services for mental health and incorporating in that, I think that's ties into our unhoused population. And I don't know if this fits in with our jurisdiction, but how we can help improve the foster care system. And I don't know if that's more city or that could be a county and out of our jurisdiction.
Did you say foster?
Foster care systems, youth specifically, well, obviously youth, but those aging out of the system as well in the mental health. So I wasn't sure if that was the justice or which or.
Yeah, the, the challenge is how do you tie it to the more physical change of the community? And typically, I don't, I don't want to completely rule it out. If you have thoughts on, on how it's tied to the physical development of the community, we can explore that. But if it's more service based, social service, it typically is not within the purview of the general plan. Doesn't mean it's not a highly important, highly valuable thing to look at. It's just, it's a, it's a, it's a different area of focus.
Thank you for that clarification. I was tying it into the unhoused and I know we're focusing on housing. But at least I got to state it publicly.
And with our, with our, with our housing element, we do have some language about housing services for the unhoused, things like that. There's quite, there's quite a bit in there in that regard. But it's tied to actually the housing, the housing itself. Making sure that you've got housing for all the different levels of income, including those who are essentially without income.
Thank you so much.
Please. First of all, I'm sorry that I'm feeling miserable today. I have a severe headache, I'm not interacting too much. But I, I do have a question on housing. And basically some affordable housing. And like Jesse said, in 2015, there are going to be like 13,500 new housing units. And as per medium density residential, there should be 10% will be offered to the affordable housing. But how many houses will be earmarked out of 13,500 houses? So it doesn't tell us the exact figures, that's one thing.
Yeah, we do not yet have an inclusionary housing ordinance. Staff are working towards developing one. We'll have more information about the status of that effort at May 21st. But for example, we haven't picked a percentage yet. I've seen in other cities, 5% and other cities, 10%, right? So there's a lot of unknowns. As in addition, of, of inclusionary housing ordinances frequently offer in lieu fees as alternative. Theoretically, over time, those in lieu fees could build new affordable housing projects. All of that is to say, we don't have figures or estimates for how many of the new housing units will be affordable. However, if you look at our housing element, we plan to meet our regional housing needs allocation figure of approximately 3,500. That is broken up into income levels. And so we have goals of how much affordable housing that we would like to build over, or excuse me, like to facilitate over the next eight years or so. But that's a goal versus an estimate.
Yeah, and to, and to add to that, Commissioner Paul, I don't think you were on the commission when we brought you the housing element. I don't think, you might have been. But we deal with housing and affordability of housing in eight year chunks. The state has set it up so that eight year cycles of, of planning for affordability is, is the way that we do this. So when we, when we adopted the housing element last year, we'd be looking in another eight years to come back with some more analysis on that based on what the state tells us. And so the state tells us every eight years, you have to build a certain number of units or you maybe not build, but you have to plan for, you have to make sure that you've got the amount of land. And you have to do it in the right sets of densities that you can be building more affordable, more affordable housing for a certain number. And if I remember correctly, the low and very low income levels are somewhere around 1,400 units for this coming eight year cycle. So we made sure that we've got a zoning program to allow for the planning for that. And to support that, not just at the land use level, that's where we're looking at the inclusionary housing ordinance to ensure that we're also getting a funding source to ensure that we've, we've got housing that where the costs are restricted so that folks who make less, more in the lower income levels, their housing is essentially subsidized in some way. So there's a very robust, very detailed program that that inclusionary housing ordinance would then help support and implement.
And how about funding the affordable housing for the low income group? Because these days the house pricing on the house is way too high. Everything starts like $700,000 and above. And when we talk about affordable housing, I don't know what's the minimum amount we are looking for. But these days, I would say that a person who's works at the minimum wage, like say $15, he might be earning only $2,400 a month and say $30,000 a year. So how a person, and if he tries to rent a house, rent an apartment, it's like one bedroom apartment, two bedroom apartment, it's between $2,250. So I don't think any, any, any person who works at the minimum wage, wage, and they be, they be able to afford. So is there any amount of funds reserved for them so that they can buy the house? Or for rest of life, they're going to be either renting a house, they will, is there any policy like rent to own for them or no?
Yes, so if I can, it's a little bit complicated. But so you start by looking at different income levels. And one, one of them is moderate income, which is roughly 80 to 120% of the, of the region's median income. And for a family of four, that median income, I think, is around $111,000 is the, is the typical. So 80 to 120% of that is some range, you know, roughly, I don't know, $95,000 to $125,000 for a family of four. And you can calculate what is an affordable monthly housing cost for a family that makes that income. What we're then looking to do is ensure that you've got housing that is price restricted so that that moderate income family can afford it. But also, you know, a family that's making 60% of that moderate, of that median income, some of our units have, should be restricted for an even lower income level. And there's math that figures out how much is that monthly amount. Our inclusionary housing ordinance is intended to help us give a funding source to help, help ensure that. It probably won't cover all of it, but it will go a long way. You know, the state has their own programs, tax credit programs, things like that. You know, the intent is that we're doing what we can to help supplement the other sources to help ensure that for certain families that make lesser amounts of money, there are housing where the costs are restricted into their income levels.
Staff are available to meet with you and discuss, you know, these topics in small groups pursuant to the Brown Act or even agendize it to get, dig into it deeper. However, the housing element was adopted in 2023. And so these elements focus on other topic areas.
As, as the city gets deeper into our work on the, on the inclusionary housing ordinance, Jesse and I can come back with you and give you a lot more details on that.
Thank you. Other comments?
On, on the remaining things?
Yes.
Okay. So Travis protection element, I just have three quick things to say. Protect Travis, protect Travis, Travis first. And with regards to that, under economic development element, Travis is an economic engine. I think we need to, as a city, as a county, as a region, we need to continue to promote outwardly that Travis Air Force Base is a 10 figure. It's a multi-billion dollar economic engine to this area. And the amount of jobs, secondary jobs and trucking and everything is so, so important to our area. So we just need to, to remember and promote Travis Air Force Base as the economic engine for Northern California that it truly is. So have that say. In regards to permit, with economic development permitting and processing, hopefully there's a way to fast track or streamline some of the sales tax businesses to get them open quicker. So if we can get them open quicker, more money's flowing to the city quicker.
May I clarify? Do you have direction about how to implement that? And are you referring to, what would you like to streamline specifically?
The, I would get, my suggestion would probably be to have a, have a situation where, I can't really call it a retreat, but an open forum with some of the, with developers and such to see what they feel maybe are some hindrances to getting open quicker and seeing where then the city can do some things to, to shorten some of those times to, to get the approval so they can start. I mean, once you get, the longest period of time is usually that approval process, right? And, and then once it gets built, once it starts building, those are all, you know, pretty, pretty set in stone, other than, you know, trying to, trying to have goals and guidelines where inspections happen sooner rather than later. So, and then the last thing I think of economic development for me is the heart of Fairfield identity. That's, I think it's progressing really well. As I go down there, evenings and such, you've seen so much more foot traffic in the evenings. And it's great to see the restaurants and the bars and stuff. And hopefully some of the businesses around there will stay open a little bit later to create that viability down there for everybody to happen. With some of those, I know the city puts up the small, like four foot by four foot graphics on, on some of the vacant buildings. A suggestion I would have is maybe do larger ones that would take up the whole window space. It just shows the vibrancy of, you know, and color and just showing some movement in that, in that regard. But yeah, I'm, I'm really happy with the way that it's progressing down there. Open space conservation and recreation element. I'm wholeheartedly for bonds to get us caught up with some of the, some of this maintenance. The city just needs to figure out a way to, to get main, get a maintenance fund going so that parks do not continue to lag behind. Because I mean, we're littering some of these parks 20, 25 years behind getting it built because there's no maintenance funding to, there's money to build them, but not to maintain them. And that needs to be a priority because it's about a healthier Fairfield. And a healthier Fairfield is getting people out there, walking to their neighborhood parks and getting that, that accomplished. Sustainability element, environmentally friendly purchasing, I think, is really important. You know, with, with what I do for a living, you know, I deal with airports where sustainability is a, is a huge factor. is a huge factor in purchasing, whether it's, you know, and just so people can understand what that purchasing means for businesses, you know, not just so much individuals, but there are things that they can do that are familiar to the environment for sustainability and things that, a lot of those products can go into, not into the recycling aspect, but for the composting aspect of it, which then is going to reduce the waste going into our landfills and the recycling. And then, public facilities and such. This one is, you know, like, I have to live with a four-year-old who understands garbage too well. And so reducing waste in landfills, the collection and recycling services. I know that the garbage company, when they're bringing out new cans to us, we've got the stickers on the top saying what's best, you know, what needs to go in there. But the older cans, that we all still have, don't have those. And, you know, and just like batteries, you know, my four-year-old grandson, you know, reminds me and the neighbors, batteries do not go in recycling, they do not go in garbage, they have to be separated. And he went down to the neighbor, that vacuum cleaner cannot go in recycling, it's got a battery in it, it'll catch a fire. So just, you know, that education, you know, the recycling, it's not so much, the education factor is so great in that, to get people to understand really what can and can't and shouldn't go into those three cans. So, and the greater the education, the greater chance we have of meeting those state guidelines. So, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just a couple of comments for right now, I may have additional ones on economic development. On ED 3.2 and 3.3, I really think that's important, if we can even strengthen that further. And I know this is just the guiding principles, and then there'll be more to come. Clarifying for underserved youth, is that just college age, or is this high school, or starting in middle school, or, you know, what are we, what are we thinking about for the vocational training and not just all types, blue collar, tech, white collar? Make sure we incorporate all of that, because there's sometimes a tendency when we're looking at not youth at risk, but youth with a promise, that we focus on certain types of jobs and not more global of what can sustain you. So you can purchase that house that we're referring to. So just in those areas, maybe strengthening that is my comment. And then, on environmental justice and public health, under the healthy convenience stores, I like the idea of bringing in fresh produce. But in addition, really focusing on bringing in those stores that provide that so that people aren't having to go to the liquor store to get produce, but that they have alternatives and not just looking at the bigger picture. So I think it's great to stock those, but also to look at where we strategically have these markets. Thank you.
Thank you. May I share a grieve?
Okay, so to roll back to parks, I believe that one of the challenges that we've clearly had is having enough funding for our parks. And perhaps we could look outside of our own community to some of the other more successful parks nearby that have found ways to generate funds so that they, so that we can afford to have park rangers and better parking. If we offered better parking at our parks, but you had to pay for it, and we could have vouchers, we could have things for families that are, you know, in a different economic situation, or elderly, that we could support that for them. But we need a way to encourage people to use our parks, and one of the things you need is parking. You have to have a way to get them there, and that is a way to pay for those parks, is charge for the parking. And within our, I don't have it here right now, and I know it's here, it's here, it said very clearly that they want expansion, the city council wants expansion of our parks, provided we can afford to do it. Well, it's kind of like the cart and horse, which one's going to go first? And we got to find a way across that bridge. Something that I don't see in these elements here, it had been in them in the past, and that is that when we're looking for economic development, that we're looking for companies that can utilize some of the riches that we have, and one of those greatest riches happens to be water. Unfortunately, that is under tremendous strain right now. And I don't know if all of us received the email from the city today that highlighted what the California Water Resources Board is trying to do and the water they're trying to take away from us. But we all need to get on board. I hope all of you got that email. And write the letter, you don't have to write the letter, all you have to do is pull up the form letter and send it to your congressman, send it to your assemblyman, and get it out there. And I'm doing this publicly because I hope that people are watching and hearing this, that if we don't protect the water that we have in Lake Barriessa, the state is going to take it. And it's, actually, it's not the state, it's the Water Resources Board Agency. And they are not elected, they just go in and do whatever the heck they want. I think that'll do for now.
You were just getting rolling there. Vice Chair Evans, any additional comments?
I was just, I found it in my weekend homework. My comments would go under EJPH 2.1 and 2.2. And then, I think there was one right after, and it was kind of addressing having community resources located, I think it's 4.6, because to my fellow commissioners' comment about mental health and services and such, I'm thinking maybe including the wording like resource center under there, or like a community action center with the community facilities and services.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry, that's it. I'm sorry.
So I know in here you have comments about community gardens already, I just want to state that I would like to encourage and emphasize how beneficial that may be. I probably missed it, but are there any specific solar policies? And if not, if that's a gap, I would like to see us have policies for future development mandating where appropriate solar additions.
Yes, and we
You do?
We do have solar, that's also addressed by building codes and state laws. But we can look at what solar policies we have and look to see how they can be strengthened, if that's what you would like.
Yes.
Great.
Well said. There are several comments about taxation. Measure P will sunset in, I believe, 15 years from now, maybe it's 13 at this point. Is it appropriate to have any policies related to the support of Measure P or its equivalent?
So I think it gets to the idea of development paying, well, I guess Measure P's not a development paying its way, that's a broader, a broader
Sales tax.
Financial. I don't know that it's a land use specific, it's probably not, it's a financial matter that's probably off to the side.
Yeah, my only thought was, a lot of Measure P is used for funding, you know, life safety and public works, roads, et cetera. So that's the reason why I was bringing that up. What about arts? You know, the city owns the arts complex, I know that you've got some comments in there. Is there any way that we can help emphasize and strengthen that? Okay, that's all my comments. Do you want, are there any additional comments that have been sparked? Do you want to try to summarize this?
Yeah, and we have a policy about public art program, and I'm trying to, I believe it's in the land use section, but I don't know that I'll quickly be able to pull it up. So what I'll say is, for the most part, I didn't hear a lot of explicit direction of changes to what's in here or additions, but let me summarize what I heard. I did hear certain support for the concepts and policies, particularly Commissioner Kennedy with Travis, protecting Travis, things like that. I didn't necessarily hear specific changes in that regard. But some of the things I did hear, and if I miss something, and you want to go back and further clarify what you'd like to hear, please do, I'm not trying to ignore your comments, it's more, we heard a little less in terms of change this or add this. So Commissioner Evans, and I do think there's a policy in here to this regard, and I think we just cited it in the environmental justice section, but you want a policy to encourage expanding our home rehabilitation programs for lower-income folks, as well as neighborhood revitalization programs?
And then homeowners in general, too, because I think that's just
In general, okay, all right, home rehab in general. Let's see, heard from Commissioner Kennedy, I think you'd like us to engage with the development community to explore their thoughts, to work with them to help streamline the development process. Suggestion to expand the city's vibrancy program downtown, the vibrancy programs where we have some of those window displays to further expand our vibrancy program downtown for vacant uses. Let's see. Commissioner Greavy talked about, and I think I'm, I don't know if I'm paraphrasing or putting words in your mouth, but looking at best practices to, you know, you talked about looking at other communities' best practices for expanding park maintenance funding, including things like potentially charging for parking. From, I didn't, apologize, I don't recall which commissioner it was, I think it was Commissioner Greavy, to expand education regarding recycling and waste reduction. Commissioner Kennedy? Let's see, what else do we have here? From Commissioner Warblin, ensuring we've got a policy to encourage development of grocery stores and that sell healthy foods, rather than, probably broadening their distribution throughout the city, with a focus on healthy foods as opposed to chips and snacks and things like that. Let's see. Commissioner Matthews wants to make sure that we have strong policies in here regarding promoting solar, solar energy creation infrastructure and other infrastructure regarding solar energy. And Commissioner Evans, you mentioned environmental justice and public health policies 2.1 and 2.2, which I think that is where we start talking about the neighborhood revitalization, I think that's what those were, if I saw those. Was there something specific about those numbers? And I think you mentioned a 4.01.
I'm just adding the wording like resource center or community action center.
Let's take a look at that one. Which one is that? 4.1, or which number? 4.4?
I think it is, no, I'm sorry, I'd have to pull up, I was trying to spare a tree. I'm sorry, you can come back to me, I'll find it.
Okay. What about 2.1 and 2.2, Jesse, do you have those?
Yeah, that one we need to try to start ready.
Jesse, are you able to bring up? Yeah, there we go. So 2.1, reserve land for employment, no, that's economic development, the environmental justice.
Sorry about that.
There we go, 2.1, healthy housing work with the housing authority. So I think this policy does get at the rehab program.
Yes.
But we can certainly take
I'm sorry, there is something additional that I said earlier, but I don't recall.
Okay, but we can take your, we can take your comment that you want to make sure that we've got strong policies in here to support
Yes.
Broad neighborhood revitalization and housing rehab services. Okay, did I miss any particular comments, things that you wanted to emphasize or change? Commissioner Warblin?
Not to change, I did bring up under the economic development, ED 3.2 and 3.3.
2 and 3.3, yes.
About just being more specific with the youth, variety of job opportunities, not just necessarily blue-collar jobs, but it could be technology or white-collar, what have you. Under the skills development, can't remember that comment, but it was under those two, to strengthen it. Let's see if it's in my notes.
You're going to strengthen and broaden the applicability of those? Okay, all right.
Any other comments?
I found it, it's EJPH 4.6, and I was just saying, we can maybe add some wording in regards to a resource center so that it can cover things like, you know, mental health, just all kinds of different community services.
Oh, I see what you mean, so you just expand the list of the kinds of services that those
Right, to a resource center.
Collected to mental health facilities and what else did you say?
I would say like a resource center or
Resource center.
Community action centers, because all of that kind of stuff would fall under there, because I know Commissioner Warblin earlier mentioned having access to those kind of services. So I thought maybe that language would kind of be an umbrella term.
Yeah, I think that's an appropriate way to tie it to a land use focus
Yeah.
With this policy. Sure, okay, I think we've got that, so.
Just one other thing, please. When, under economic development, when we talked about, you know, the heart of Fairfield, combining that with capacity building with community partners under the Environmental Justice 5.2, encouraging more, more businesses with minority-owned businesses and women-owned businesses, where the community partnerships with the chambers, whether the Fairfield-Sasun Chamber, or the Hispanic, or the Salona County Black Chamber of Commerce, or the Phil Am Community, having some how-to workshops, and are there city funds, either through CDBG, where they could get some help with grants and stuff for rent, you know, first, last, you know, type, you know, some deposits that may happen, that may be a barrier for some of these businesses that could come in and that want to get into business but don't know how to know how to get into business? And maybe we help facilitate that, which would then help that downtown get rid of a lot of those vacancies and stuff, by putting capacity building along with some of these other things, so we can get some more minority-owned businesses in our city.
Yeah, so I think you're looking for a policy that encourages the city to explore funding opportunities for business startups-
Yep.
-broadly.
Yeah, and the chambers are the natural thing, you know, because housing can go with faith-based organizations, but this can create that synergy between those other organizations to work together, to create greatness.
Okay, yeah, is the social aspect of that with, you know, for minority or women-owned businesses, is that the focus?
MBE, WBE-type stuff, I think is, because I think there's a lot of people that want to, would like to, but don't know how to.
Okay.
And instead of being afraid to ask, we put it out there that, you know, in conjunction with any of the chambers of commerce, that these are the programs available, and you can really step it up so that, give them a learning process to get to that end result of being a business owner.
Okay, I think we've got that. So, we'll add that to the list of suggestions for the commission to consider.
I would just note, just new and current, because-
Yeah.
So that are new and current businesses, so small businesses as well, and that does provide into going into that social equity factor as well, because if they go out of business, then we're right back to empty storefronts.
I wish I could remember the name, through SBA, there's a group of retired businessmen and women, it's an advisory group, and you can have them help individuals. And if we could reach out to them, I know there's one in Sacramento, and clearly there isn't one here.
It's called SCORE.
SCORE is the, okay, yeah, to explore, you know, using programs like that, okay. I think we can, if the commission is supportive of that, I think we've heard enough to craft at least a recommendation on that topic.
Have we exhausted comments? Are there any comments that commissioners take exception to that may not be in agreement with what was suggested? So otherwise-
Two thumbs up, all right, I love that, that's great. All right, thank you very much for your comments, it's always good to have a nice, robust discussion of all these topics, it's what we really appreciate you all for, so, thank you.
Okay, and again, Jesse, thank you for your hard work on this.
All right.
Okay, Mr. Ponce, do you have any additional items for director?
Yeah, for our special meeting tonight, I don't have any additional items, I do, I don't think we're going to have any items for your next meeting, very possibly for the, so you'll adjourn to next Wednesday, which would be your regular meeting, we don't have any items, but your agenda adjourns you there, so we'll adjourn, but we'll cancel that one. Very possibly, we'll have your second meeting in May, we will have items for that, we definitely have items tracking for your first meeting in June. So, next Wednesday, you're free, you have your special meeting tonight, so, thank you all, I also want to say thank you all for being available on an off Wednesday, very appreciated. Fits much better with our schedule as we work towards getting your comments to the city council on the 21st. Thank you.
Do any commissioners have additional comments that they'd like to make?
Tomorrow, farmer's market, first Thursday.
That's right.
So tomorrow, farmer's market starts downtown Fairfield, lets everybody get out there and support it, so it can continue to grow. And then the Saturday, Volkswagen of Fairfield will celebrate their grand opening, which probably shortly thereafter will be the outing of Fairfield in the same building, so, let's support our businesses, let them know we want them here.
Yeah, and I'll note, if you do attend the grand opening of our farmer's market, a number of the restaurants in downtown are offering a discount of 15% to 20% for Thursday night, for Thursday nights at the farmer's market. So, if you go down there, you get a discount coupon for a number of our restaurants downtown for Thursday nights.
Thank you, anything else?
You know, I feel like I've talked a lot tonight, but I want to say one more thing, and that is that we talked about bikes and bike paths, we talked about food, quality food, instead of just junk food in our gas stations and so forth, and we talked about multi-generational and exercise in the EJPH 4 area. All of those are under blue zones, and I have had to slide that to the back a little bit, but I still intend to pursue Fairfield becoming a blue zone community, and that will fit right into what we're trying to do.
Here, here, any additional comments? Well, on that note, we will adjourn to our next meeting, May 8, 2024.